We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Five council members are here and this meeting is at the State Bible School. Don't be here. My mind's joining in quick word of prayer. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you bestowed upon us in our town. We just ask if you fill our minds with wisdom and our hearts with ability and we'll make decisions that will lead into you. In your great heavenly name we pray. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, once again, like we've got five members here. Moving on, approval of the management meeting in June.
Motion to approve this. Second, there's a correction, Mr. Mayor.
Standing.
On the under the new business on the mobile home placement, it's it states in there the what we did was I think we left out a resolution. So we first passed with a four to two vote to approve or to overturn the the planning commission's decision, then there would be unanimous vote with the conditions. So it just shows that the unanimous vote was just correct. So right before there, I think there needs to be a little bit more detail on that.
With those corrections. I would All right, we have a motion and second with the aforementioned corrections, all over the favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed and approved? Approval of financial statement for June.
A move is approved.
Second.
Have a motion and second, approve financial statement for June, all over the favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed. I will tell you, I'm trying to do a better job of keeping an eye. Of course, we know what inflation has done, it's been having some of those different categories we might have to look at here. Right now, I don't know of any major issues that will approach us on any city vehicles or lawnmowers or anything at this time. If it does, I will let you know immediately. Inflation is definitely affecting them almost all. All right, reports of city departments, fire department.
Our runs for this year so far are totally 627. Our past training, we've had some forceful entry training, upcoming training, we got a new EMR, emergency medical responder. Training is something they put in place instead of having to go down to Canada and get the first responders. They've got this place where volunteers, they can test the fire one and fire two. We have some upcoming on July 26th and 27th, our basic auto education training. And some events we participated here recently with the 4th of July event, I think it went well. Our guy did a really good job helping out facilitate it with Steven and McCallston. We participated in the funeral of the Lurie Fire Department captain. We staged in Green Bar with our tower and put the flag over the highway 65. And I think we even got compliments from their chief, Al Lurie, saying how impressed he was. It was an honor for us to be a part of that. On our building permit side, we've had 57 so far this year. We finished June off with nine permits for that month. So far, month of July, we have seven permits already, one of those being the Healdville over Harbor Home. It's going to be a nice position over there. On the code enforcement side, you know, obviously it's summer, we've had a heavy fall on grass. I want everybody to do the best we can to try to track down each one of those residents and try to do the best we can to get those properties cleaned up. And just want to make sure you understand, it's summertime, cut your grass.
Well, and I'd like to add, we have never in your city, I don't think during your time, putting a lane on a property is a huge, huge undertaking. Personal property rights are very valued in Arkansas and rightfully so. And it takes almost an act of Congress to give a lane on a property. So I ask everybody to be patient. We can ask them, we can threaten them. But it does take an extreme weight for us to have to go in there and do it ourselves. Planning commission, ready?
All right, good evening. So we met on June 27th. We gave a variance for the land back land, Mark Baptist Gym slash worship facility. You spoke about the mobile home. Discuss that. We're moving forward with the U D O. And then we're meeting on July 25th next week. We have a public hearing here in the courtroom at 7:00 P. M. We're going to discuss the amendments to the current highway mixed use zoning to remove the mini storage buildings as permitted use and change to conditional use. So if you have anything to speak on that, please attend. And then last minute, so I haven't seen the agenda for next week, but that'll be posted shortly.
I don't know of any plan right now on the agenda that I have anything that might come up.
Questions to serve? Thank you.
Thank you. Planting department.
Just been working on a few grants, I'm applying for that equipment grant that we got two years ago that was for the radio about $3,000. And so that grant's open back up now and we'll be applying that to get some equipment. Also applied for the grant for vests, our vests are new, we're going to have to make an order now really, this month probably to get those replaced. And then today, we had a market burglary at the move swing date. We busted in, towed some stuff and recovered gun tow vehicle, county person tow vehicle, couple of guns. So four people we've got, we're charged with so far. So we've been busy today. But then nobody got hurt and it was good. That's all I have. If there's nothing else.
You like her to eat?
It's their department. There's the man right there. Right on him as he comes up. This young man has done a yoke with work on that expansion that we've done. I don't even know how many hours he's worked, ain't got his own salary.
We had that discussion today about me putting the bower in.
Anyway, thank you, sir.
I appreciate it. We did get the bowers put in Friday. There are a couple tweaks we've got to make. We're waiting on the V F D to come in and bring the third along line. The headworks will be in at the end of August and that will be the last updated plant we're doing for right now. And then we're going to do some updates, some little fixes, but that's about it.
I will tell the committee or council, Brandon and I hadn't talked, we hadn't talked yet. We are going to this month at the council, we have to get all the councils. Whatever meeting we're going to, sewer department, sewer committee, there we go. We're going to start discussions about what has to be done as far as the next expansion that way. But we've done well over the years, staying ahead and we want to keep that up. We don't want to get caught like other agencies. Wait until we need it and then try to figure out how to do it. So anyway, there you go.
All right, thank you. On the street department side, a lot of different things going on. Of course, we only have two young men, I thought we had. And they've been busy mowing railways, re-modding and stuff. We've been inundated with requests on the drainage ditches and with other courtesy. And we try to get to them as we can. We're trying to, we think we'll have a company that will be in here mid-August. Be all access to their money and all of those chemicals, probably lipoate, to do a burn down on the ditches. Because it's just our little track though. It bears it up to do some of those situations. So we're better to do that. But that's always been a courtesy and we'll try to do it as much as we can if they may be behind on that for a while. They have, I don't know how Matt's going to do it, Duff Creek has no underground drainage. And we we know we've had problems down there for a while and we identified it with our engineer a few years back. He's going to go in and try to work those intersections and start on that next week. And we'll get those taken care of. When we do get the money, it will probably be about a million to do from pretty reliable estimates. There are not any underground drains in there like I told you a lot of times, we'll have to dig the dust in the middle to maybe help get some of that water out when we can get to that. Saddle Creek, we had this programmed in the past year. The contractor that's working on Turk Street is going to move over there and redo the concrete manholes, drain covers and work on that. Turk Street should be finished by mid-September when it'll be paved. I'd like to remind everybody that that's all grant money. I've had some people say, well, that was grant money we were able to get from the federal department transportation. Also, the Naylor Road project, which is another grant, will be funded from our budget. They're going to try to get those at the same time. Asphalt has went through the roof, inflation has been a killer. That Naylor Road project, given that the state is bidding it, with 1.1 mile, without any milling, we have to do on Gooder Street, that project come in $245,000. I've been hearing that a lot. The county is in the same boat that we are. They're, they have a lot of issues and very little money. And they're going to, they've got a company out of Missouri, Trey, I don't know if you've ever heard of a tape seal. But they're going to tape seal about eight miles of Naylor Road, county part. So I'm going to be interested to see how that works. I'm going to go over and see what they do. From what I understand, it's a chip seal that goes down and then there's a black type sealant that goes over that. I don't know. And I'm going to have to look at cost and see what's going on. Our road fund, we're doing as good as we can. We have about $500,000 a year that we couldn't spend and that's going to go very far. So we've got two guys. We've identified about eight to 10 million dollar worth of overlays that we could do. We're going to continue to look and claw for what we can get and when we can. Also, we've had a lot of calls on the decorative lights and the night watchers and the light bulb. We don't have anything to do with those, those belong to entry, we just get to pay the bills, that's for electricity. We have been noticing entry, I know talking to staff the other day. Entry has hired another subcontractor and I've, we've been reporting those vehicles. One of them come in, had to be reported to that away. But if you do see lights out or anything, it helps us to see a night watcher out or something, let us know and we'll get it over to entry so they can work on it. But looking forward, our only option on any of our major projects is grant money. According to know, we've got the two bridges in Saddle Creek on North Barrel and Randy was a free engineer. And if we see an opportunity to get any grant funding on that, we're going to go for it. And we're also continuing to look. I thought we could do it. And I told you, Mike, the sidewalk, outside side school, we just can't do it on our own. We just don't have funds. So Trey is helping me with some plans in there. And we're going to put in for a safety drive school program. And hopefully we can get a grant to send that sidewalk all the way down to Alley Bay.
Is that part of the metro plan money too that you talked about?
I think it can be.
Okay.
Brady's gone, I guess, but I think you, I think it can be. But that's what we'll continue to look at and we'll do the best we can. Matt's also going to be, like I said, they'll, him and they'll try to keep the mowing up and try to get some of these projects done. They're going to, they're going to be putting a turn line in on job charts there that I have. Has some big way to do a little bit, just the table comparing left to right in that direction. That should be pretty simple.
But all of the work you're talking about is being paid for. Church Street, Saddle Creek, Naylor, all of that?
Well, the Saddle Creek will not be, the Duff Creek will not be.
Right, we have to work for it.
The Naylor, the Naylor and the Church Street sidewalk project have all been funded by the federal department transfer.
Oh, sorry, man, our.
Yeah, and the bridge projects as well.
What's some ARP money to the board, right?
Yes, we have used some ARP money on Church Street. We probably wouldn't have been able to do any of that. Sidewalks are really used, it kind of amazes me. Seeing people doing that. All right, parking reg.
Buffalo South Fall started last week. We had 15 teams sign up to play. Season's going to go to August 1st and we'll have postseason tournament the week of August 5th. We started Sam on baseball again on Friday nights for the month of July. Started last week, will have this week and next week as well. Had over 60 kids show up to play, a lot of them being out of town. You know anyone who played baseball coming out Friday night at the baseball complex? We're opening the field 13 and 16 this week. Free event and concessions are open for it. I'm currently working on budgets for field renovations at the softball complex. I'm trying to get a couple, a couple bids in to to get that taken care of. Fall baseball and softball is going to start in September. We're going to have signups in August. We'll post that on the Facebook page. Planning to start movies in the park one night a month. Our first one is going to be July 26th and baseball complex is going to show Sam on it. And we'll try to have one around the start of, start of school in August. And that's going to be a three man also, so.
Matt, I'll show this money to you.
Did you get the projector number line?
Look at the screen.
You've got to have it. There you go, break in yesterday, rolled in on the playground equipment. I didn't know you'd get it. Parks and Rec is never fun when you're having a run. But taking that good job. It takes a lot of good fun golf. All right, public comments, Saddle Creek residents, feel free to come out here to talk.
All right, well, of course, we're here to talk about a few of the problems with our street at Saddle Creek. We're at Appalachia and the creek is kind of deteriorating a lot. And we did come over about three years ago and talk about it. And each year, I know you keep telling us you don't have any money and I understand you don't have any money. We probably can't get a grant for it because it's not a new street. But we have a plethora of problems with the street. There's cracks all over it, it floods. And I know you just talked about coming over and repairing some of the culverts. I understand that, except that even if you do that, the pipe going down to the creek, I had it repaired two or three times and every 10 feet it sinks, the dirt's washing out. It's there again. I went out there and every 10 feet, I mean, there's a hole I fell in at once all the way up to here. And I appreciate the fact that you keep trying to fill it, but I don't know how that's going to help. Because someday we're going to have a sinkhole, giant sinkhole.
And it's in a lot of places too.
Oh, yes, it's fallen down the street. Because I guess of all the water and the water has to go down and it's flooding in the streets when it does rain and it.
I will tell you, the streams were designed to do that. That was engineered and designed.
To flood. Well, they didn't put big enough pipes in there.
But that was the original design.
Yeah, I know we talked about last year and you mentioned it a while ago is where the bridges are too. Doesn't that culvert make like two 90 degree turns? So it slows every bit of that water coming out of the main ditch and that's got to get fixed.
We did have a place, we got the engineering done.
Where are the bridges? Where do you talk about bridges?
Right by Barrel Church, is it Barrel Church right there?
One of them would be on North Barrel and one of them would be Gradle. Let's see, is one of that.
That creek runs in between.
You're talking about Barrel side is where.
Well, we were talking about this with last year, the creek, it's weird, it runs both ways, isn't that correct?
There is a natural break there. Part of the water goes to the White River and part of it goes to the Arctic Bow River. The natural divide.
And I know when we were discussing it, like the Barrel side has the three round culverts, which is an outdated style culverting system, correct for bridges? It's more of the box culvert now, which helps that water get out. And the same with the other way. It's a culvert, Kyle went down there and looked at it with Matt when we were talking about it last year. And it goes in and makes a weird, I'm not mistaken, Trey, you looked at it too, 90 degree turn and it makes another one. And so it just slows everything down coming out of there. So that takes more backup onto the roads, so.
We almost thought for a while too, like it was bad before, but it just continues to get worse as things start paving in. But it's just not able to flow because it's paved in in spots.
Oh, the street itself is sinking in several spots and along the curve, it's sinking along there. And then you guys keep coming over and trying to patch it up and everything, but. Well, I mean, it takes hours sometimes. Like sometimes I can't get home. It rains, I can't get home. My house seems to be right in the middle there and it goes halfway up to my yard.
Everything's open.
And I have to.
The court's open, okay.
There's only six inches.
I walk over the neighborhood a lot, so I've noticed how it's doing along the curve, along the street, on the sides, you can tell it's, it's water, water.
In the middle of the heavy rain, it's like, you know, I have tall waiter boots and it's over the top of them. So like if you needed to bring, heaven forbid, an ambulance or something to get there in the middle of that, it's not going to happen.
Last time that happened, I think it only rained like for an hour. It was halfway up into my yard and I went out finally because I had to stop working about 10 o'clock at night. This was from 7 to 8, it stopped raining. 10 o'clock at night, I've got a car there that was driving through, the same water was still in the street. It did not go down.
It won't. I mean, they, they designed that street to do that. The issue we're going to have right there is going to be the downfall. I would hope when we get the new bridge in on Barrel.
It's kind of watered out, I would think so too.
And you said that was funded?
Not yet. We do have the engineering done on it. So that's two that we got. And Trey, I don't know, I can't remember the funding cycle come on, open on that.
We didn't get it last year. We had the application for the August.
Yeah, if we can get that fixed, then I think, you know, fix repayment of roads, talking to the good and then continue to flood.
Yeah, the flood has. Okay, it's kind of a two-fold issue. The streets are a problem.
But so is the drainage.
We don't fix the drainage, we'll fix the street and we'll be there in three years.
I used to cut hay on that property. Stacy Jones's place and it, I can remember times when we couldn't get in there to cut hay, so in July. It was a, it was a very flat piece of ground. Watersheds do two things. They're either very steep, the start of the watershed, or they're very flat. And that piece of ground was very flat. It was a good farm.
Was this picture taken during the flood when the hurricane was coming through here a week or so ago?
No.
That was, yeah, and that wasn't bad, did you know that?
That wasn't bad. My street didn't even flood then. I was gone, it was in California. But I came back and everybody said your street didn't even flood. It didn't even flood. Before that.
You don't get to cut right to California.
We got here in four inches rain. And I'm there just, just a little edge from. I was just curious if that was during, I know this has been common ever since that subdivision, something that Appalachia's especially, that had problems with this water.
I've been on that basis for nine years now. And it, it wasn't this way for the first probably four years I was there. And it's just kind of progressively gotten worse since then.
It's almost like.
These last couple of years.
There might be dirt in there or something plugging it up. I don't know.
Do y'all mind if I speak frankly?
That's our city engineer.
That subdivision, the way it was designed and everything about it was done about as pissed poor as you can get. It's, it's flat. There is no drainage to speak of. And the city inherited a massive problem that is going to take a substantial amount of money to fix. Grant money has gone so far, it's going to take time. I understand what you're saying about as, as the road gets inundated with water, it seeps in, it eats the subgrade out underneath it. If, if there are pipes in there, what little bit of pipe network there is, if it's taming, it's going to allow dirt and everything to fall into that and a sinkhole probably a stretch, but you could get pockets and holes where it's falling on top of pipe. All of that stuff will have to be evaluated and you could spend billions of dollars over there in what we're reading in the streets. It was, it was, it was designed, and the mayor's correct, I mean, it was designed for the streets to be the drainage system. Which is not the way it should have been built.
They should have put bigger pipes in to begin with.
I don't know that that would have helped.
Really?
I don't know if it would have. It's, that, that's my opinion. You go find somebody else, it might give you a different opinion. But I feel like we're, we're doing the things that we can do within the money that's available to try to make those improvements. And it does take that, those bridges. So when the bridges are replaced, we will try to reshape and channelize that ditch or creek between the two bridges. So the water can flow more efficiently through there. So if it's flowing more efficiently through there, it doesn't have a chance for the water to rise in the creek. Whereas then it gets over the pipes where the water is trying to come through the pipes and getting backed up because water, it can't go anywhere because water in creeks.
Right.
Back into the, into the pipe. So being able to regrade that ditch with, with the grant money that we can get, if, if we're funded, should help with some of those things.
Is there any way, if you did replace the culverts, to put something in there, you know, like, like you do, you know, at home with your pipes? And go down there and try to clean it out a little bit and get it.
Well, I mean, there, there are companies that we could, that we could look to clean those pipes out and potentially patch those holes. A lot of those concrete pipes are not the same. So there's, there's only a couple of ways that you can.
So what do you, what do you do if those are collapsed already and on?
So, yeah, you can dig them up. We can actually do.
Expect that's what's happening.
We've got some surgery having the last couple of years where it's blowing a line that seals the inside pipe. That works on concrete pipe as well. So that's an option if it comes to that. And you can do those in little pieces too. So again, that's going to take some grant money and sure it takes. It all boils down to money. We did the best we can with the money that we got. And yes, that has been an issue for years. Duff Creek's been an issue for years. There's not a lot of potential, there's not a lot of grant sources for street repair. And I mean, you can give grants to sidewalks and repairing streets and repairing drains, but there's just not, there's not a lot of.
Well, I won't, we've not been just sitting around. I mean, we, we, we know we took it serious. I've had Trey look at it for the past three, four years. We've done a complete engineering with the city. We looked at Duff Creek and Saddle Creek, we looked at Alley Bay. And we, I think Brandon's got 25 of those stations to get water out of the line. And we, I think Brandon's got twenty-five of those stations to get water out of Bologna. And we're just gonna flat.
So how how does one get annexed in though to the city? Like why was Saddle Creek annexed into the city? Because I I heard someone say inherited the problem, but why? Why were they annexed in?
I wasn't here. I don't know.
We should have stayed with the county and the county will would fix.
I mean, like, because the county did approve and fix Barrel and they fixed Brady, like they repaid or not fixed, but they did, you know, repay.
We were in for, uh, we just, we were in for half of Barrel. That's been about three or four years up there and three years ago. We did redo, uh, Granny Lou there coming in. Uh, we had a little grant on that by Barrel Church. But I want you to know we're listening. We have been. We're gonna do what we can, when we can. Uh, we've had these bridges in the works for two years and we've had this, uh, the manhole work in the works. We're listening. We're gonna try to do something engineering for city engineering, city more eloquent than I can about what we can do on the creek. Uh, but we're listening. We're listening to all the subdivisions. It comes down to money.
I I know.
And Faulkner County, I was over the road department for Faulkner County for twelve years and and I can tell you right now, I am there in the same boat we're in. Their Naylor Road project, which I'm excited to see is something this county's never done. Uh, we're gonna have to be innovated. Uh, we've got a lot of folks that's moved in that did, that, uh, you know, we, uh, the sixty-fifth batch growing county in the United States, now it's thirty-fifth. And, uh, we've got a lot of issues to deal with, not just here, it's every city, every county around here. And, uh, cities are unique. Uh, everything that goes on here is funded by local sales and use packs. And, uh, uh, we don't get much of anything out of property taxes. We'll get that. I encourage people to do business here in town, buy some tires from Keith and and, uh, support some of these restaurants as they come in. That's why I've been taking the decision to open my corp and chamber and others to come in. Uh, the secret to this town is gonna be growing revenue here. There's other towns. I think it's Prairie Grove that Kelly and I learned about when we were visiting the city out there in the same vein we're in. Forty-six, forty-seven hundred people, uh, growing fast, uh, yet they're close to Springfield Rogers. And you have a lot of folks moving in there to to enjoy the the quiet country lifestyle, but at the same time they want services and I I understand. And, uh, our little old budget, I think, correct me on this, is going about two point nine, not enough. But but we are listening and we have took it serious and we have programmed some of this stuff in. And we'll continue to do that. It it stays on my mind all the time. Dove Creek, Dove Creek, Alley Bay, it just, it stays on my mind.
How do you decide, like which order you decide if I, the need you can ask?
Uh, you, basically what we have done is how old subdivisions are. Uh, we've had some that the roads haven't been touched in thirty years. Some of the older subdivisions have been in the seventies. Uh, we've been able to get a couple of those. We'll probably just go chronologically.
Not by how big the problem is, just maybe by how old it is?
How old it is. We'll look at it, take it on a case by case basis to, you know, share enough about it. But, uh, uh, if it's on our radar, I'm gonna start playing lottery. So I promise.
Yeah, because I think Saddle Creek also takes on from the hill behind to take on water coming from this way to us.
Yeah, and and what gets us in a lot of trouble is in Arkansas law, we can only go twenty-five feet from the middle of the road legally. Um, we have to have a clear threat of danger or or threat to to public well-being to build much weather on that. So we can't, the water issues, and I went up there and looked at it and and you're right, there's a lot of water coming in there. And then you run into issues with the Corps of Engineers and, uh, when Trey, if he ever gets to work his magic on on the creek he mentioned, he'll have to go through the Corps of Engineers.
Sure.
And there's no, yeah, there's no guarantee. They may, uh, it's tricky. I know. But there's not a whole lot legally that we can do though.
What, uh, what grants are y'all looking at right now? I'm trying to make a question for you, but what are the grant sources that we can go after for something like that?
Well, the bridge program will be through Arkansas Department of Energy Management, Hazardous Mitigation Grant. That's one we've been lucky. I think we've built ten or twelve bridges with that in about six, eight years. And Bill Sumner, when you were here. That will be on the on the hazardous mitigation. There is some more hazardous mitigation money, I think, that comes through FEMA. There's a little bit trickier to get in. The road repair work, we can get city aid program that they like to focus mainly on through the roads.
Sure.
It's got a lot of traffic. Trey's right. There's not a lot of rehabilitation grants for for the city, for subdivision streets. Uh, but there is some grant money out there. Uh, the FEMA grant is a lot tougher to get. You did say that Adam Grant's in August. And and I'm gonna pull our horns in a little bit. Council's not upset. I'm only gonna look at the, uh, bridge grant for them and the sidewalk grant. I think we need to kind of pull in and figure where we're at.
I agree with Mr. Mayor.
I said I'm gonna just pursue the bridge grant and sidewalk grant. I'm gonna kind of slow it down, see kind of where we're at. We are having some revenue growth, the road fund, James, correct me on this, it's a quarter cent?
Quarter cent, let's see.
It's a half cent.
It's a half cent.
It brings in about.
Our projected income is eight hundred and nineteen thousand for street problems.
Yeah. But I don't think we hit that. No.
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 And general funds, like you said, two point nine, but then also you got a lot of expensive BD and lights and.
Actually getting to split between the park and, uh, street. It's a half cent, but it goes quarter to park, quarter to park.
We get about thirteen to fifteen thousand a month. I hope the asphalt goes down after this next election's back. But, uh, it, this inflation's been a down. We, uh, when we, wait, when we originally bid Church Street and the first time we got it out, out there then, I think it went up. Go five hundred thousand. It's, it, there was a time there in all the projects across the state, it just blew my mind. It still blows my mind.
Well, I I have a question. Um, it would seem that it would be more cost effective to kind of prevent some of these issues on the front end and try and fix them all. Does the city not have any say when contractors come in and say, hey, I'm gonna cut up a subdivision? Do we not, does the city, would I go in and say, hey, you know, there's drainage here?
We do now.
But not at the time.
Not correct.
Yeah, the planning commission now, part of their stuff is don't look for those site plans and along with our engineer and make sure there's box culverts every so many feet and everything. So it's.
They're doing a great job at that moving forward.
Yeah, we're catching these things.
That kind of leads me to something else. So Benny Dallas behind Saddle Creek, they are wanting to be annexed in. The lots that are really nothing but they hold water, tons of water. And there's a pond on one and the other's just like a swamp. But they are wanting to build those up and be annexed into the city. So this is, I mean, to me, that doesn't make sense unless you take care of how that's. The drainage. It's just gonna push more to us.
What streets are those again?
Benny Dallas is right behind Appaloosa.
Benny Dallas.
And they had, there's three lots for sale. One of them is sold and we've been approached to let somebody have sewer that just coming over on Har Street.
But there's not, there's not a whole lot that we can do once again about the water on private property. Am I wrong?
But if you annex them into the city, then, I mean, won't that have to be approved in order to see how that water is?
Doesn't have any claims of annexing down at this time.
Uh, they're they're gonna.
I know the sewer was there.
That's part of the later on here. We got an annexation.
I mean, your comment is definitely worth noting.
Yeah. They've already been over there trying to figure out how to get the sewer, ask her house out to our street.
Matt says it's a water, he may go down, he can do this. He said he may be able to clean out the end of the pipe. He said next time he gets a chance, he'll go over the, uh, tractor, clean up that. All right.
Well, you did a great job with Church Street. It looks real good.
Well, you can thank the federal government. They've been very hard to deal with it. Yeah, well, thank you. Well, thank you all. Anybody have any more questions? All right, thank you all. All right, on announcements, um, on my end, the city of Bologna, we did contribute to the fireworks show. Uh, it wasn't a big success. I think they cooked over twenty-two hundred hot dogs.
That was a lot.
Everybody enjoyed it.
Do you say the city contributed to the fire?
If we can, uh, maybe it's a part of the fun.
I have no problem with that. I just wish we'd just take over the show.
The new business Poppies pick out is reopening on Main Street, uh, there across from Keith. Uh, reminder, uh, when it's citizens on foreign things going on within the city, the city of Bologna has an app. You can find it with the connect Bologna at the Apple or Android app stores and it'll allow you to receive notifications on your phone from the city. Also, real quick, uh, the Spirit of Bologna update. I have not heard back from him. I know the young lady that helped him on that has had an illness. Thankfully she is recovering, uh, which is a good thing. Uh, Mike, your questions on far as their concerns and stuff, if you wanna share that with the council, I think it's probably best y'all flesh that out between yourselves. The lawyer didn't really, that's not really, that's illegal there, what it is, y'all's idea. So, is that cool?
Yeah.
All right.
You want to say that for another time?
Oh, we want that.
We gotta say that for another time.
Well, then go ahead and flesh it out with them. If you get time. All right, uh, Chamber of, or what, I've got lost. Department recognition of a council person being, she is not here. Uh, we'll handle that tonight. We were, we were wanting to thank our planning commission. They spend long hours, no pay. Uh, they have a lot of varying, uh, opinions in that group. And, uh, they they have a lot of cerebral banter and, uh, but we wanna thank them. Uh, we couldn't be here without them. They take their job serious and we just wanna thank them for certain.
They did a good job.
They did a good job.
I agree.
Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, so my name is Will Atkins. I'm Conway Downs Houses. Um, I'd like to thank, thank y'all for the opportunity to speak today on behalf of Bologna Chamber. I'd like to start by thanking the city of Bologna, the fire department and the junior firefighters for your help with the, uh, US flags. And that display. Uh, our goal is to add six additional flags next year on sixty-four B. Our, on Thursday, we have our luncheon that we have every month and it is at Simple Simon's for eight seventy-five pizza and salad bar. It's great. I love it. I'll be there. Brooke with Roche Combs Homes will be our speaker on Thursday. And then for our August fifteenth lunch, Central Arkansas Carding will be speaking, so that'll be really cool. Um, our next, uh, upcoming event will be our Fall Fest, which will be Saturday, October the twelfth from ten to four. Um, at the Veterans Museum, uh, booth fees are twenty-five bucks for members and thirty-five for non-members. Um, and more, more information will be posted on our website about the event. The Fall Fest is a community event open to the public and is free to attend. And then in November, we're looking for new board members for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six year. Thank you again for having me. Got any questions?
Any questions?
Yes. Like the pickles or the town.
You got good hearing.
Well, thank y'all.
Thanks. Thank you. Bologna Community Development Corporation.
Um, I'll speak on a bit of that. Uh, President Chad Hearn is out on vacation, I believe, this week. All I know, he sent me on upcoming stuff we have on the local, is that we're gonna be hosting the twenty twenty-four Bologna Teacher Business Fair. It will be at the Bologna High School gym, August thirteenth, twelve to two. Uh, and what it is, it's a, uh, a chance for our local businesses to show nearly five hundred educators and faculty that work at the school, which is our largest employer here in the city. Um, what businesses are around, what's offered. Uh, that way they can, they know what services are out there to, like we said, help promote shop local. Uh, that is going to be free for our members to set up a table space. Uh, if they're not, if they're non-member, it's a hundred dollars for booth space, which also includes membership throughout the rest of the year. So if any businesses have questions about that, like to be involved in that, please check it out on our website at developbologna.org or on Facebook.
Question, all right. Uh, planning commission will meet again. Uh, make sure this is in the record, will meet July twenty-fifth, seven B M here in City Hall. Uh, the UCA Community Development Institute Advanced Year Class is gonna tour Bologna on July twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four. Uh, that's a big honor. Uh, they picked us out of the whole state. They think we've got some good things going as far as, and we are trying to get a handle on developments and and trying to do things and, and, uh, I'm, I'm really be honored to have them. It's a big honor for our town to be recognized. Yeah, so I guess we're we're trying to do something, right? Uh, old business, like I said, I haven't heard anything back in Spirit of Bologna. And that young lady, go ahead.
Real quick on that, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make sure anything, so whatever we do with that property, I know we had kind of an impromptu discussion last month. That'll come back to this council.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, then I'm not even worried about what we discussed.
Well, go ahead and and I don't see any legal issues or anything. Y'all questioning this out?
Okay. Y'all. I mean, we can meet and discuss that without a, without a, uh, work session.
You can.
Okay.
If y'all want to meet, y'all sure can.
You're the boss.
I'll, I'll call you one if you want it.
Ah, well, I mean, uh, we've.
Not right now.
We've been down the road.
Yeah, I'll call you one if you want.
Okay. Well, we can talk about it if everybody wants to.
Uh, new business, the audit for twenty twenty-two was completed and has been presented to legislative audit. And no time needs to hammer in. So good news. Wanna do a few compliments to our staff and what a good job they did. All right, uh, discussion on the playground equipment for Parkwood Meadows City Park and softball complex. As we come to the close of the Church Street project, uh, we had, we tried to be real frugal. Uh, we've had some ARP, American Rescue Plan money that we had back. Some of the situations we discussed here earlier tonight, uh, it could take us eight to ten years to try to save up enough money for this playground equipment. We felt like staff and I that this was a good idea. The old playground equipment that was at, uh, Parkwood Meadows at, uh, Washington Memorial Park, it came from baseball originally.
It was secondhand when we put it.
And and it started coming apart, so we had to replace it or replace it. We had to get rid of it. Uh, we had a lot of complaints about the possibility of endangering the children. Uh, so we took it out. Um, we've had a lot of requests for playground equipment in baseball, or I mean softball. Uh, so you have this proposal here and if y'all, uh, go along with it, it would be approximately eighty-six thousand. Uh, that would be out of ARP money. Um, we're getting forty percent off. Uh, we're getting free shipping, which saves us about seventy thousand. And they will put it in.
There's installation.
Installation.
And that's the concrete curves, the curve and the turf under everything.
And the drainage. Yeah, it's. I, once again.
Yeah. When you were. Oh, well, I've just got a couple of questions. Okay, so is all of the funds that we allocated from the ARP monies, we allocated beginning of year, have those already been expended? Or this is what's left over?
Uh, they have not all been expended. I think. Uh, they have not all been expended. I think there's about a hundred and.
Uh, there's more than that in there.
It shows we got two eighty-nine, five oh four, but, but when we, when I, if I, and I, I don't have to sit right home and go back and look at the budget that we allocated, all of those funds were gonna be expended on the Church Street project. I understand if we're ahead of, if we've got what's left over, it's a great problem.
I thought we had some more money turned back from the state. Did we not on the streets?
We did. We actually got some more money and some grant money.
And my next question was, when I look at this, where it talks about installation, is the site prep, I know we're gonna have eighty-six thousand. Do you know what it's gonna cost us to, to repair that site?
That's current case, the one I was, uh.
Well, it says our installation prices are based upon the site being graded and ready for equipment with no longer.
That won't be, that won't be no big deal for that.
So will our staff will do that.
All right, further discussion?
We actually took that donation from the Watson family with the intention that we.
We did that.
Uh, and I'm, I'm a hundred percent, we have to do something with the Watson part there.
Well, I said.
I don't want to be old, but we definitely have to.
I think that's a big, my bad. So I think this is a once in a ten-year opportunity for y'all to do the frugality of this staff and how they don't have any money.
I think when we did one over at the baseball park, that was, uh, through a grant and we had to do installation and everything and it was still a hundred fifty thousand.
That was a good one.
Yeah, we did the work.
Is her price.
So, on that's your plan the other day, um, we were talking about, and I missed it while I was at the, this is our academy. But there's an Arkansas Department of Parks and Heritage for tourism.
The fundraiser.
Yeah. I know we talked the other day, um, a lot for a couple times, haven't received it, but it's up to a hundred thousand dollars for playground equipment.
Yeah, we.
Our median income.
We, we put in for it three times in a row. What hurts us is Bologna's median income is seventy-one thousand. All the folks that are moving in, they, they have good wealthy incomes and you get right outside this township and it's, the median income is twenty thousand. And so Bologna's kind of become a magnet for those that have come in. Now, we have, we put them in for them on any cycle where we usually get beat up over, over moderate income. We don't show it before, but we are. In central Arkansas, Mill Mill is the only area that shows a higher average income in Bologna.
Yeah, we're equivalent, yeah, we're equivalent to Rogers pretty much when you look at.
Well, I do have those numbers pulled up from the proposed twenty twenty-four budget. I'm just wanting to make sure we're not overspending. We've got, so we allocated eight hundred fifty-one thousand, thirty-three dollars, eleven cents to go towards the city improvements on Church Street project and sewer improvement, which would have depleted that fund. Are you telling us tonight? That all of the Church Street stuff paid for and we've got next.
What I'm telling you is how good a job your staff has done. He has, like, Brandon's been the blower then. Brandon goes down there and works. And Matt, and this beautiful.
So our budget's ahead on that.
That's what I want. And that's because of this staff.
Yes, it is.
Is this equipment handicap accessible?
I have no idea.
I don't.
I've seen the picture. I don't know what it is.
I don't think it's a all-inclusive playground stuff. Uh, those are a little different. Uh, you'll have ramps and all kinds of stuff and those aren't on that.
Are there some grants out there? I thought I saw one time, we were talking about this, that was for all inclusive. Of course, you're gonna, it's gonna cost a lot.
Yeah.
We've got to keep that in mind. I, I, in this particular one, I'm told this, I really have to start keeping that in mind. Of including, uh, handicap for children, you know, these types of things, so they can enjoy this stuff too.
Further discussion?
No, I was gonna say, uh, one too, I don't know, Kelly pointed out, I'm not on there, but that, one that's going on at Purple Meadows has lights built into it as well. So they have security lighting built on top of the playground, so it would be light up there.
Cool.
But on that, and I'll make a motion to approve the spend eighty-six thousand, eight hundred, eighty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents on ARP money for playground renovations.
I have a motion to have a second, sorry, I have a motion and second to spend the same amount, uh, of ARP money for a playground at Parkwood Meadows, Washington Memorial Park and a playground at the, uh, softball complex. Although, they were saying that I'm saying that.
Uh-huh.
If that is, uh, will do your. All right, last but not least, um, Brandon, thank you. I asked you to come up even after you put in a date to serve land. And, and, uh, on annexation update, it's been a long time since, uh, anything was done on that.
Yeah, um, it, it was delayed for, I tried to get one signature for a year and a half. The landowner was out of the country most of the time and very difficult to get in touch with and wouldn't like sign, so we dropped him off. And I picked up another part of the land, but everybody signed it. It's at the county judge, so y'all will be seeing that shortly. And, and just to explain, what we took in was three or four of the lots were sewers, going to have sewer. Uh, we straightened up the intersections at South Mount Olive, South Church, and Stanton. And kind of squared everything up to come into the city up there at the bypass. I think that was four days.
What is the next step on that? So you drop it off at the county and the day?
We go before the judge and then it comes back to us.
Does it have to go to like the court or anything, or just the judge sign off on it?
No, judge sign off on the county court.
Which is, the judge will take it and then it'll come back to us.
And I have, Brandon, has that been in the middle of it? Did I want to, y'all, any questions to think on that?
It's a great show about the annexations behind Saddle Creek. If they get sewer, they have to be in the city. Yeah, so they would have to annex in at their cost and their expense, not already to be, be in the city.
I understand, but we definitely don't want, I mean, we need to somehow think about, I mean, because they do raise a good, these folks raised a good point about if they built up their street in their, you know, little valley and that's, the problem's worse and then we can't maintain it.
On, 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 on the flip side of that though, when they put in sewer, that's a contained system. If they put in a separate tank, you're adding more water to their problem.
That's true.
So, I mean, the, they could build on their land regardless. So, but being on sewer, that's, that's the best option for everyone.
Any, but, and Brandon, I'm in.
Wherever we add sewer, we're proposing to annex.
It will be annexed.
It will be.
Yeah, so all the new expansion is what, we cover this.
It's what I'm saying. I'm just going to. Does this have to be something that, I mean, I don't know, I'm just asking a question. Do we have to have a public hearing or any of the properties occupied by?
From voluntary, right?
It's all voluntary.
It's all, if everybody, okay.
Yes, it's all voluntary.
It's really just about the county judge signing, right?
Yes. Now, if, if it was an election or something like that, it's, it's, they would have to be.
There's several different ways and there are all of them. You can have involuntary annexation.
But we have to have a written ordinance on it, I suppose.
Yeah, it will, it will come before y'all when they get back from the county.
That's the reason I had Brandon to be here, so even if he thought of a garden.
Okay.
But, and then like, for like one, that, that Saddle Creek, that's on, like, that's like. Yes.
They'll have to do all.
Yeah, they, they will handle all that on their own.
We've not been out acting, it's taking.
No. But, uh, but that will, again, same steps as what we're doing now. They'll have to go before the judge and then it comes back here.
Got you.
All right, have any questions? Uh, Brandon, Brandon, thank you. You can go home and cry for the morning.
Thank you, Brandon.
All right, any further questions or any concerns or anything? I'm probably adjourned, huh? I think mine would stand adjourned. Thank y'all for coming out.